Is that loud enough?
Yes.
I'd like to call to order the City Council Work Session Agenda on March 27, 2017. It is at 4:00 exactly. We are all here. And Councilman Stiff, are you on the telephone?
Yes, I am.
Well, welcome. We really appreciate that. We know how difficult it is. So we'll go to the -- we have two items on the agenda tonight. And again, council, this time, I mean it. I would like to remind the council to refrain from asking any questions until the staff presentations are complete. Am I getting nods from everybody? Oh, good. I love that. Okay, so we'll go to 3.1. Council will have a discussion on incentive options provided by staff and consider the pros and cons of implementing a development impact fee reduction program along with the ability to waive plan review and permit fees to further enhance retail and entertainment recruitment. Michelle Laurie, Economic Development Director, and Robert Ito, Project Manager. You've got the floor.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Robert and I are pleased to be here with you today to discuss retail outreach and ways to potentially encourage retail development in Goodyear. We do have a special guest with us as well tonight, David Scholl of Vintage Partners, who's going to speak with us further into the presentation. He's on I-10 right now, so we'll get him up here when he arrives. First, let's start with a definition of what retail is. Retail simply is the sale of goods or services to ultimate consumers. Let's talk about the significance of retail business to the economy first. Retail businesses, including shops, restaurants, and entertainment venues are by far the most requested and communicated about by residents. We have a few in the audience with us this evening. And they are in high demand by the city's ultimate leadership, which are the residents of Goodyear. Secondly, retail businesses create sales tax revenue for the city. For the fiscal year to date, more than 60% of the city's sales tax generation comes from retail and restaurants alone. That is close to 17 million, and that's for this fiscal year to date. Retail also plays a key role in our economy. And you'll often hear, and I know you have before, retail follows rooftops, meaning that residential growth or housing developments are the most critical element toward retail development. The creation of jobs or daytime traffic is also critical for retail development. Likewise, major employers like to locate near amenities. Symbolized in the graphic to the right of your screen, these are all reliant upon each other, the retail, the jobs, and the housing. We cannot emphasize that enough, that retail development is contingent upon residential and employment growth.
Now, the work session objectives. We have three objectives that we're going to cover today. And in order to get to item number three on the work session objectives, we first like to provide a brief overview of retail recruitment efforts, share what we're hearing from retailers, brokers, and developers about Goodyear, and talk a little bit more in depth about potential incentives that we can offer to assist in attracting retail, more retail and entertainment. So at the end of this work session, we hope to receive council direction based off the information presented. Okay, first, a brief overview of retail recruitment efforts. Thank you. So we put this here in a chart for you. Input outreach tactics and audience. First row, input. We receive input from three sources mainly, and one of the most important of those is our stakeholders, our Goodyear residents, as well as council members and industry experts. From the industry experts, we hear what's currently hot and expanding. On the outreach portion, it's two components, economic development department and retail strategies. With the economic development department, we have one project manager assigned to retail recruitment efforts, which is myself. And retail strategies, our consultant, who was added to our outreach efforts through a supplemental budget request. They started in January of 2016. We have the budget to continue this effort for the remainder of the year and next year through 2018. They assist us in directly contacting retail and entertainment prospects, representing Goodyear at a total of 10 ICSC conferences. And what that means stands for is International Council of Shopping Center. That's one of the largest conferences for retail. If you're a broker developer, property owner, that's the conference to attend. They have these throughout the nation, and we are, Goodyear's being represented at 10 of those, again nationwide. And then also with on-demand reporting to provide to developers, retailers, property owners, help us with updated research and that is most persuasive in attracting retail and entertainment prospects. On the tactics, frequent ongoing communication with retailers, developers, brokers, and property owners. Again, we're attending trade shows and sales missions, and oftentimes, we go on sales missions for other industries, but maybe there's an opportunity to capitalize on a retail attraction effort. And then local events, any attending local events strategically where brokers, property owners, developers are going to be there so that we're constantly having that ongoing communication. And I'll touch on the ongoing communication in a couple of slides. So with that, in terms of the input part of the process, wanted to share with you the top 10 most desired retailers from our citizens and council. First one, interesting chain restaurants, and we certainly have the availability within our city to accommodate these. Restaurants such as BJ's, Cheesecake Factory, you find a lot of these in other cities throughout the metropolitan area. Excuse me. Number nine, Chicago-based brands. We have a lot of folks from Chicago or just love Chicago-based brands. Two of those to note that are popular are Illuminati's and Portillo's. And Goodyear definitely does want a Portillo's here. Number eight, upscale steakhouse, Fleming's. There's one not too, too far from here, Ruth's Chris. Those are examples of just more of a fine dining that our citizens desire. Seven, bowling game center. That's where we touch on entertainment. So we definitely want to see a development or project like a Dave and Buster's or a Lucky Strike. Same with six, Top Golf, another entertainment type, very highly sought-after retailer. And number five, trendy restaurants such as Pita Jungle, Lolo's Chicken and Waffles. There's a whole handful of them, but they certainly attract a lot of foodies. Number four, same thing, trendy experience restaurant. These are more of a Fox Restaurant, Postinos. Three, Costco. Everybody needs something from Costco. And two, Whole Foods, Sprouts, examples of large natural grocers. And number one, by no surprise, Trader Joe's. That is by far the most requested by everybody that we have in our community. But I just want to make mention that that's also consistent with every other municipality that doesn't have a Trader Joe's. So for the recruitment process, part of the strategy has always been to work on building valuable relationships with the local brokers, meaning within greater Phoenix. And this is what I meant I'd touch on in a couple of slides. Several of the brokers or firms who represent real estate opportunities in Goodyear also represent retail tenants. And one that we want very much as a community, in fact, on our top 10 list. So we want to make sure to always have that ongoing communication with them. We're also actively tracking new-to-market retailers and providing on-demand site-specific data reports. We now have the right marketing and demographic information to really sell Goodyear. So we're not just pursuing the top 10 most desired retailers, but we now have over 1,000-plus retail and entertainment connections, and we've seen over 50 successes thus far with some logos shown below. We also have a marketing guide and a catalog of all properties that we are constantly using in these conversations and outreach efforts. And we are using the same data sources, and this is important, that retailers use because the last thing we want to do is use, you know, something that's not like-for-like for what they're using to make their comparison for the trade area. And another thing that I may touch on a little bit later is, a lot of times when I speak about trade area, retailers are not interested in city limits, they're interested in trade areas. And so the city limits is not as important to them. Next slide, feedback from decision-makers and industry professionals.
So how retail decisions are made? First and foremost, it's return on investment. So the return on investment is really, you can say it as this, it's estimated sales less the estimated cost equals the profit. So anything that can impact sales, reduce occupancy, or operating costs can increase a retail business's return on investment or ROI. Contingent upon these pillars, in terms of determining ROI, expansion happens when a retail concept is expanding, so a concept is actually looking to expand. A new location will not cannibalize nearby existing stores. And when the estimated profit is higher than competing locations. So just highlighting that it's all about return on investment, and it's about the customer base and the sales and the profits, and less the occupancy costs and the operating costs. So in terms of things the cities can do is encourage that customer base, continue to encourage that growth, the development of the housing, residential, also major employment, and anything we can do to help with occupancy costs is probably the place where we could help, and then the operating cost. So when a retail brand is considering location or expansion, there are three major factors when considering profits. Those are population, or as I said earlier, the customer base, demographics, the type of customer to fit a type of profile, and location. So things important to a location are, five universal site metrics that we hear from retail strategies as important is, number one, visibility and signage. Two, traffic, is it strong? Three, parking, is it adequate? Do they have the need, the use that they need? The accessibility, the ingress, egress, traffic lights, curb cuts, co-tenancy, who else is in that center or that market? Are they going to be next to a retailer that they feel that is a good match for them? And then design, so aesthetics or the age of design. I want to go that it's, I want to mention that it's very important to note that some of these numbers can look very different from retailer to retailer. So for example, for something that might be a population or a demographic for a Costco will be different from that of a Trader Joe's or a Whole Foods, something like that. So as we go through these and talk about kind of feedback on Goodyear, always be thinking that it's dependent upon the exact type of retailer that we're looking at.
Here's some of the strengths and challenges as it relates to the Goodyear trade area. As Michelle mentioned, site selection factors, we have population, a strength, strong projected resident. We are 10% built out, access to a larger trade area with the freeways. And also speaking to what Michelle mentioned about visibility, we have a major asset in our city with vacant land along I-10 for projects just waiting to happen. You don't necessarily find that along I-10 as you move eastbound. Demographics, high median income within the region, high education levels of residents, and of course, location, I actually touched on that, but the availability of property. On the challenges side, population maybe is compared to other municipalities within the region, a lower daytime population, not necessarily a bad thing, but again, when compared to competing markets, it can be a barrier. Low density of high median income when compared to certain pockets with higher retail synergy, and low density of high education levels of residents. And with this one, it's not necessarily that it's a low density of it, it's just, again, compared to pockets where we have higher retail synergy. We are further from the core. We're just 20 minutes west of downtown Phoenix, but oftentimes, there's other parts of the city that have a little bit more density. And then timing of the mall development. So this can be a challenge where you have retailers not sure how it's going to play out and where they should plant their flag. And so with the uncertainty, sometimes they may hesitate and wait. The other thing I just want to mention really quick with vacant land as a challenge, you know, it can be thought of as a challenge because of the fact that there's a lot of vacant land versus minimal vacant land. So it's something if a retailer's coming here to do a site tour and they look around and see larger tracts of land vacant, that can be a challenge as well. Now I'd like to take this opportunity to bring up, or actually introduce, David Scholl with Vintage Partners. Just going to read a quick bio on him. Vintage Partners is a group of six principals who have an extensive history in Arizona's real estate development community. Throughout David's career, he's been involved in almost all aspects of retail, I'm sorry, real estate development process, including land acquisition, joint venture structuring, entitlements, finance, pro forma development, construction, leasing, and management. And he has experience in a variety of property types, including regional malls, power centers, neighborhood and lifestyle centers, office properties, and even golf properties. Prior to the formation of Vintage Partners, he was a senior VP of Development for West Core, overseeing ground-up development and redevelopment for Mesa Ridge's Arizona portfolio. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Mr. David Scholl.
Welcome, Mr. Scholl.
Thank you for having me, in spite of my just walking in.
Be sure that microphone is close because it's close to him. Would it be helpful to give him a?
I'm good.
You have a small microphone you can give him? Hello, hello? This is a lot easier, and you can move your head then with your words. Does that work? Can you hear me? Okay. You don't have to be stationary. Yeah.
You hear me okay?
Yeah.
Good. Well, I was saying, in spite of my just appearing to walk in and not being prepared, your staff was nice enough to send me this PowerPoint a couple days ago, and so I've had a chance to see a little bit of what was presented. They also gave me a little bit of background on what stimulated this conversation that you're having today. So the way I prepared to give you a little bit of my thoughts was really to try and emphasize a little bit of what I saw. And I think, I think the biggest points I'd like to make you really fall into a couple areas. I think staff's right on target when it comes to what the retailers out there are looking for. It has always been, and it always will be, you know, that location, location, location statement. And it doesn't just mean a physical address, it means that corner or that location in relationship to the demographics they were talking about. And those demographics include everything from density to incomes to retired, non-retired, educated, uneducated. These retailers pore over these demographics, and they even look at psychographics, which is a whole nother layer of studying a marketplace and tying that marketplace to a particular location. I think the physical constraints that impact a location, do they, do they have the right number of, you know, right turns and left turns into a location? Do they have to cross a railroad track and a freeway to get there? There's all kinds of man-made and natural barriers that end up causing some locations to be weaker or stronger than others. I think one of the things, the herd theory is alive and well, maybe more today than ever, and we see retailers want to go with each other to locations. And so anytime there's an existing critical mass, that ends up helping a lot of retailers, you know, make their decision on where they go. Retailers by nature are afraid to pioneer on their own. They are much happier when they can call 10 of their colleagues and say, "How is your experience at that location next door to the one I'm looking at?" And if that's a good experience, it can almost be more powerful than anything a developer can say, because they can get exact sales volume data, and they can get a feel for who is the customer in that marketplace. And they all know each other, they know, one retailer knows exactly what their target market is, and they can call their competitors and find out, is that target market really in that area, and how are you doing? And they can call some compatible retailers and get that same information. I think the mall opportunity that was just mentioned is a strong one, because that really is the opportunity for the southwest region of this valley to have the critical mass for much of the future. I can get into that more in a minute if you'd like. And I think the last point that I'd really emphasize is just, as a city council, I admire, as a retail developer, I admire the extra critical thinking you're putting into, what do we need to do to attract retail to our community? That's right in my sweet spot, I appreciate that. The discipline side of me says, for a sustainable retail piece to your fabric out here, don't lose sight of a balanced community. You really need the jobs, you really need the housing, you need the outdoor experiences, all the things that make a community, a community where you want to plant your family and raise your kids and retire, all of those components are what make retail sustainable. There's an old saying, retail follows rooftops. And so anytime there are new neighborhoods being built, enough of those new rooftops eventually demand the basic services that those people are going to want to spend their money on. And so rooftops tend to follow jobs, jobs tend to follow transportation corridors and quality of life issues. And so as much as I would, I would, I could be a great beneficiary to much of what you're talking about today, like I said, putting my hat on, which is not just about retail, I really would emphasize that you let your staff continue to be leaders with you to make sure that your community you build out here is very balanced. I guess the last thing I would say, and I'm rushing through this because I don't know how much time you've got, and I always find out in these situations that your questions are much more important sometimes than my babbling, so the sooner we can get to Q and A, it may be better for you. But the last point I would say, at least right now, is that I've been in the retail development business for 35 years. I've been through three significant recessions, and therefore, three recoveries. This recovery that we are in now is the weakest and longest-lasting I've ever seen, and it is compounded by two other rather important sort of perfect storm elements. One is the millennial generation is voting very differently with their dollars than generations before them. And the demographics that we have right now, with a massive amount of people that don't have kids and a massive amount of people who are empty nesters, you've got this dumbbell population of huge number of baby boomers that no longer have anybody at home, and a huge number of millennials that don't have as many kids yet, driving them to eat at home. And so we end up with a huge bubble, I think, forming right now in the restaurant world. And I think, I think the restaurant world and the experiences, you know, a retail experience, a recreational experience, an entertainment experience, a dining experience, the consumer is saying, "I want an experience now," and the retailers, and the, I said retailer, I mean, the consumer is demanding a real experience in retailing now. And I think this demographic anomaly we've got right now has really befuddled the retailers. All that to say, my industry, the retailers themselves, are in the biggest upheaval I've ever seen in 35 years. They are, they are trying to rethink their brands, they're trying to rethink their footprint. We watched them, we watched all of the big boxes grow their footprint over the last 20 years, and without a doubt, every one of them is now shrinking a footprint. We're watching all of the retailers that are in the commodity business, when I say commodity, I mean, one pair of shoes is the same as the other by the same brand, one Samsung TV, you can pick it up anywhere. All of those commodity types of products are being very easily sold on the internet. And so we're seeing huge amounts of what used to be a competition at the convenience and price point level, i.e. value and convenience, is now being won by the internet. And for many years, that was being won by the power center. And the power center and the big box center was eating into the old traditional mall. Now we're watching the internet eat into both. And the power center business or the big box business and the malls are having to look at themselves, and the retailers are having to look at each other and say, "We're now competing with other forms of free time for the consumer's attention." It's no longer about going to the store, getting your two reams of copy paper and heading home, it's about, how do we compete with the Phoenix Suns? How do we compete with a round of golf? How do we compete with tennis? And anything else that's a free time activity? Because if we're going to have people shop for an experience and enjoyment, we're now competing with all those other types of free time. And we've got a very young generation saying, "In my free time, I want to hang out at the Brew Pub or the Microbrewery, or I want to sit with, and commune with my community over dinner or a meal or a happy hour." And it's just, it's turning our industry upside down at the minute, at the moment. I can get more into it, but I'd rather we get to your questions or wait till the end, whatever you'd like.
I think if, you know, one of the things we neglected to say about David and his standard bio is that, you know, he has such experience in the greater Phoenix market and was the developer on the Havendale development there at 101 and I-10 with the restaurants, Tokyo Joe's and those sort of things. So one, I know a lot of the residents really like that, and so wanted to make sure council knew that he was, and so he has that experience in the West Valley. And I think if you have any questions of what he's said so far, otherwise, we can go on, he's going to, he's welcome to stay up here with us for the, for the whole thing.
I'd like to stop right there and give the opportunity. But since Bill's on the phone, he's not going to be on very long in the time change. Bill, do you have any questions?
I knew this was going to happen, a huge delay in getting to the buttons on my phone. I do not have any questions at this time. I will have questions when we finish.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
First on council, anybody have comments? Joe?
Yeah, I hear all the time, again, I agree with you, everybody's competing for spare time. But I also see, for example, some of the restaurants that have been in here at City always appear to underestimate the drawing power here. And I guess my question is, is, it seems to me, even though we're a population of 78,000 people, we draw from much larger population around. And I'll give you a perfect example, if they come out and they take a look at the movie theater. I know originally, when they were talking about putting that in, they said basically they don't do well standalone, they have to have a, you know, some type of a complex or whatever. Try to get in there a variety of times a day and the place is packed. You know, they're even parking on both sides of the streets, which they probably shouldn't be. And I was there this weekend and couldn't get into one of the earlier ones because they were all sold out. I guess my question is, is I, and I'm a stats guy, so I know numbers are driving, and I appreciate that. But I also hear from a lot of my constituents out there that they're leaving the city to go outside to spend their money because they don't have the millennials, they don't have things here for them to do. So they're going downtown Phoenix because Phoenix apparently has done some nice renovation with some of their older homes and have turned them into nice eclectic restaurants. So they're going down there to shop, or they're hanging out where they can get a nice happy hour type of thing. How do we go about trying to get those individuals that are, that have that disposable income that are leaving our city and going somewhere else to hopefully try to get them to spend their money here?
It's a great question, and I agree with most of the premise that you laid out before the question. I would say that I agree with you that the southwest part of this valley is, right now, in my opinion, underserved from a retail standpoint. You do have people leaving town. If you think about it, Arrowhead Mall really handles everybody that lives and wants to shop west of I-17, and it is a bear to get in and out of there on Bell Road. So I think Goodyear is perfectly positioned to be the next quadrant in this great county for a destination. And I think it was a great move to plant that flag with the theater. The way you get, the way you get those tenants to come out here is to have very invested developers that are doing the marketing side-by-side with your staff. And I think weathering the current storm. the current storm. I think, I think there's enough demand and enough people that the mall should have been here by now, but with this eight-year slow chug out of a recession, and you couple that with the fact that, when I started my career, there were a dozen department stores to pick from. If you could get four or five competing for four slots out of those 12, you were golden. Today, there are two department stores to build a ground-up regional mall with, and that's, that flies in the face of traditional regional mall development. I think, I would encourage you to not look at your long-term property owners in and around that mall, and think of them as, what do we have to do to get their attention, what do we have to do to get them invested? I would look at them through the eyes of, how do we look for ways to get them and understand how we help them tell the story that needs to be told to the retailers? Because I think your, I think your numbers are there, I think it's just a matter of all of these jittery retailers who are scared of their shadow right now, scared of any promise they make to Wall Street right now. I think they're scared to, to be appearing to their stakeholders, to be expanding in a world of contraction. All of their, all of their brothers in retailing are contracting at the moment, they're, to expect a 300,000 feet of them to suddenly want to expand with a new store, is just so against the grain and today's mindset. I don't think they have the guts to do that. To take the smaller, smaller little parcels in and around your city, and partner with those developers to go tell the story that you have to tell out here, I think it's about all you can do. I, I think, I mean, we're going to talk about some of the staff's recommendations, I assume, based upon the slides I know that are coming, but I think weathering the storm right now is the best advice I could give.
Joe, I know you have one more, but so does somebody else. I'm going to hold you off here a little bit. Wally?
Well, I, excuse me, I agree with you with your assessment about maybe working with the small parcels. I had written down that as a city, we need to get actively involved with the owners of the land around that mall, if in fact, we want any of it developed. With the mall folks themselves have been very forward with us on why they have not developed, but I really feel that we have an opportunity to perhaps build around that, because the mall is just a very small part of that entirely large parcel there. And everyone wants all of these wonderful stores, and they're just waiting for someone to break ground somewhere in our city. And I think we need to be thinking out of the box of what we can do to help them move forward. We have some companies, I believe, that are looking at us now, and we need to be able to encourage them that they will be successful here, and we'll help them. So we appreciate your, sharing your thoughts with us, and that you were able to get Tokio's and all of that at 99th and 101, and I know that that's a very desirable location, but we have one here in Goodyear as well, we just need to get it going.
Sherry?
I do have a question. We have so much of our population, we're talking about daytime population, leaves to work elsewhere. When we talk about the jobs, are there any specific types of jobs? Are we just looking for hard numbers to increase those daytime population numbers?
I would say, again, because it gets back to driving rooftops, I would say the types of jobs that drive housing. So a job for, a full-time job that's a career-oriented job, as opposed to a job for a high schooler, would be more important, because that could lead to purchasing a home nearby. It's those rooftops and that, just that body count of people in a three and five mile radius, which is really going to allow the story to get stronger. Although I've already, I'm on the record of saying, I think in spite of your size as just a city, what's in your city limits, I think you're positioned to be a net importer of shoppers, once that critical mass is built. And I just, I believe so strongly in where you guys have placed yourself, and how you've gotten yourself ready to accept that demand. I don't have a whole lot else to say, other than be patient, and I know you have been, but I don't see anybody taking your place, really, and it's going to happen somewhere out here.
All right, Joe, I'll let you go ahead with that second part.
Research I've had as it relates to malls, it almost seems the ones that are succeeding turn those into a destination point. What I mean by that, are people are going there other than to shop, because you can go on the internet and buy anything you want. Amazon, I saw some numbers that, over a period of time, they're going to be a large percentage of the retail industry, because they're tying in everybody. Is that kind of the focus of the retail business right now, at least when it comes to large synergy areas? And I'm not going to call it a mall, I'm going to call it more of a synergy retail or shopping, because I don't know if it's ever going to look like what we would consider the old-time mall, but my point is, is, are they looking at ideas that will draw people there, whether it's an amusement piece, whether it's a music piece, whatever the case may be, so you get them there, and while they're there, oh, by the way, let's eat at this restaurant, or let's go to the movies, or let's do some shopping? I don't know what's your thoughts on that, because I don't see the traditional retail making it unless I'm missing something there. I think you've got to get them there, because like I say, you can buy anything on the internet pretty much now.
Yeah. I think, I think what's going to be the foundation of our shopping centers in the future is going to be those things that aren't a pleasant experience on the internet. Luckily, the target market for most apparel retailers are women, not men. I believe, I've been told, I believe women like the experience of, when they're buying higher fashion, they like the experience of feeling the material, seeing how it looks on, having a nice person who works there tell you, it looks good on you, that hangs right, that that's the right cut for you. I mean, all of those things tend to be what, what a shopper that's buying something other than staples is looking for in that experience. I don't think the internet's ever going to be able to give that. They may be able to ship it to you with a label, so you can ship it back, but that one-on-one personal experience of helping you make the decision to invest in clothes, I don't think internet's going to provide, I don't think the internet's going to provide community experience. I don't think they can give you that brew pub experience of sitting and enjoying time outside. We've got brew pubs now that are building huge yards, so kids can play beanbag toss and ping pong, and they're allowing dogs in, and it's becoming a family destination around alcohol, which, we could debate that for a lot of the evening, but that's what's, what people are choosing. I don't think the internet can compete on that. And I don't think the internet can compete as well on entertainment. So to answer your question, I do think it's going to be about experience. Retailing and shopping destinations have always been falling into sort of two categories, a trip to the store, and, and what am I going to do with my free time? And the trip to the store was always, go, get what I need, and go home. And at that point, I was interested in, how close can I park? How quick can I get in? How cheap a price could I find? Get back to my car and head home. That's where I think the internet's going to make the biggest inroads. They can almost fulfill now in 24 hours. So we're not far from, from getting the adrenaline rush of a new purchase, it's just, it's just coming down to within hours. Where we need to improve upon and refine our retail stock is the other side. How do I draw people out of their homes, have them extend their day with community experiences, recreation, entertainment? And you just landed a wonderful, good, I mean, the best cinema operator in the state, or maybe the southwest, a great start. There's some new outdoor stuff coming, like Topgolf and some things like that. That type of destination and the volumes of people they draw would be a great complement out here. One thing I'll say, and you're learning, you get long-winded answers from me, I'm sorry, I get kind of passionate about this, but one of the things that we're hearing a lot about, the local homegrown retailers, they're looking for cool funky buildings. And unfortunately, this town, I don't mean yours, but this town had no reason to exist in large numbers of people before air conditioning. That's only 70 years ago. It's really only been in the last 10 or 20 years that we've even had stimulation for redevelopment. And so there's a part of me that wonders, we should do an inventory of the oldest buildings in Goodyear, find out what's around that old airport. Can we turn funky industrial buildings into a food hall or something? I mean, you almost have to say, what are the things that seem old and need to be scraped? Yet a lot of retailers are saying, if you make it cool, that's where I want to go. So there's a, there's a part of me that feels like we need to be starting to look at what our treasures are, that don't maybe look like treasures today, maybe we can create some destination, some cool old buildings somewhere.
Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of old buildings. But I do like the way Gilbert did. They had some old buildings, and so they built some old buildings. So if we could, it's hard to convince a retailer, though, I don't know, how do we convince them to build that style, that look that we want? And we have a very short area on Western, you'd have to go a little bit onto Yuma side. We have one area that is perfect, but we can't get the, the ownership to move at all. And it would be perfect to do, bring some old, redo it, and have some very specialist shops in that. Let me turn it over to Joanne.
Thank you. Well, if there's anything that I have some experience and passion about, it's retail, and being a mom, I suppose, are my, my two biggest things. And I am a retailer. But I, I would definitely, you know, everything you're saying is not news to me. I mean, I, I understand it all, and, you know, to me, I've been in business 26 years, and retail has always been about customer service, and quality, and things like that. But, you know, especially now, it's about experiences, it's about dealing with the senses. You know, visibly, you have to be able to look at good things, you want to have music, you know, you want to have something that smells good, I mean, it's just about that. And it's about, you want your customer to be able to maybe even sit around for a while, and, and you know, so it's one thing to shop and to do something, but it's like, you know, are they in an environment that they feel relaxed, and they're hanging out? And certainly, I know alcohol does help that occasionally, but you know, I, I understand that. And what, really, the only question that I would have for you is, is something that, I've been in Goodyear for 21 years, and I have been telling the retail story over and over and over again, and then I try to explain, I know the data you want, I know the numbers you want to hear, but the story part of it never seems to take the traction that it should. And so I always find that, when you, when you say, tell the story, I don't know what else we can do to tell that story, because, I mean, I tell people, 60% of my clients are coming from outside of Goodyear. You know, and so it's, it's really, I can go on and on about the story, but the guy that's in, you know, Ohio, or in Chicago, or in, you know, New York, that were trying to, even Texas-based, trying to get over here, without just the numbers, it's like, what kind of story do you want us to tell? And so I guess that would be my question to you, because I've been trying to tell it, and, and I just want to see, what can you give to staff to help them tell that story?
I don't have a quick answer for you. I would say that we've got to find ways to encourage the developer and the property owner to fight for that story, and to get passionate and tell it, because, quite frankly, the retailer's going to talk to the developer, and he's going to listen to what that developer says, they may do their own market study. Market studies should come back strong, but quite frankly, without, without appearing to defend the developer community, developer community has been through a lot in the last eight years. For 50 years in this town, the quote-unquote "development" community had very low-hanging fruit. They could go to the edge of town, where 40,000 new homes were being built every year for 30 years, and there was another need for a grocer, there was another need for a shopping center, and it was pretty low-hanging fruit. We've just been through a decade of no low-hanging fruit. We've, we've got developers that are saying, if I want to be able to make payroll next month, I've got to find something to work on. And that kind of has the look and feel of some redevelopment, of some broken project, because there's no outward push on, for a new neighborhood demanding new retail. You guys got caught in the middle of maturing to the point where you now have, can be a net importer of sales volumes, but you, you were born into, I mean, it was 2003, 2005, when everybody thought the curve would never go down again, and everything was going to be up, up, up forever. You were, you matured into that, and then the world collapsed, and there is so much, there was three or four years of just panic and fear, and then the survivors looked around and said, hey, we're still standing, let's take it easy, and not do anything stupid for a while. You're just, the timing's been horrible for trying to get an entire industry to expand, when they've been trying to figure out how to survive for the last six or eight years. So the developer, developers, like most people, he's going to where, where the path of least resistance is right now, and to, and to be able to make a profit, charge a fee, and fill some space, that's pretty much been in a redevelopment mode for six or eight years. As we see housing starts get back over 20, and start to go to 30 and 40,000 a year, most people would say 30 to 40,000 housing starts a year is equilibrium. That's what it takes to handle a growth of 100,000 people a year. Once we get back to there, unfortunately, it's still a few years off, I think we get to the point of where we start being able to get the attention of the retailers, that Phoenix needs some new shops, new units for each of these retailers, and I think then they have the opportunity to say, wow, look what happened in Goodyear the last decade, while I was trying to survive. So more babbling, but hopefully that, that helps a little bit.
How do you get them to, you know, square footage, I think, of, of small, unique restaurants that want to come here, you know, private ownership chefs, and they go by square footage as to the success of the restaurant, that's how they work the financial end of it? So, you know, even in the power center, I see a big spot open, well, if that could be into two buildings, into two small restaurants, or something, you know, do something different. And how do you, how do you convince them? Before you answer that, I did not think about daytime traffic in the stores, until you mentioned that tonight. We think about shopping, and you know, we're usually weekend or nighttime or something, but daytime, that you're absolutely right, because our people leave the city, they're shopping wherever they work. So, you know, that is, that is a fine point. So anyway, so how do you get them to build smaller room sizes in their, in their malls to make it a success?
Well, that's up to each property owner, who's got existing space. And we use an old phrase for years, there are people out there that own real estate, and they're interested in filling space, and there's people out there that have real estate, and they're interested in creating a destination. And you have to find the right brokers, the right leasing specialists, that look at a shopping center and say, there's an art and a science to who I select to go in there. I see two, I see two apparel stores, maybe that can justify an accessory store. Or I see all of this square footage devoted to food and beverage, you know, maybe, maybe that, with all that destination traffic for, for restaurants, maybe I can put something in that can play off of that. There are just, unfortunately, there are other property owners that just look at, say, I don't care who goes, just fill the space, and I'll lower my rent to take whatever it takes to fill the space. I think in this market right now, the retailer is very, very cost-sensitive, and very, very rent-sensitive, and so you've got to have retailers who are not retailers, developers and property owners that recognize that occupancy is more important than getting top dollar. Unfortunately, a lot of, a lot of properties are held by people that say, we're not going to lower our rent, or if I can't get the rent that I promised everybody, it's just going to sit there vacant. And then he ends up having to pay the expenses and all that, and I don't believe that way. I think occupancy, I'd much rather have somebody paying no rent, but covering all my triple net charges, than just me eating those triple net charges every month with a vacant vacancy. So a lot of it has to do with your property owner. I will say that this conversation this afternoon is invigorating me to want to come out and do more, more looking around myself, because of how strongly I believe, but that's what we need, is our developers to be awakened to the opportunities that are out here. And I think it's more important for, for your story to get told to the developers than it is the actual retailers. Nobody's better at getting the retailer's attention than the developers. They do it year in, year out, all across this country, but they need to be... But they need to be coached. There's an old saying that my, one of my mentors used to say, and it was, selling doesn't start till they say no. So, as these, as these retailers say, no, not yet at Goodyear, that's when these developers have to start selling hard and going out and doing the studies and getting testimonials that say, I've got proof that 60% of my sales are coming from outside the city. And, and, and telling those stories. And, but I think we do have to leave it to the developer to tell them. I think we can very easily confuse retailers if they're hearing one story from a developer, another one from a third-party brokerage firm, and a third one from an economic development director who's out trying to have his own or her own private meetings with retailers. That, as a developer, that always makes me more nervous than a, than a concerted effort where everybody's a team saying, I'll provide you data, you go do the selling. And, and I'll act as a host if you can get them to town. But I think strategic alliances like that are the way to go.
Well, I'm hoping tonight, when our discussion is at another part, is that developers that are coming in, they're going to build something, okay? They pitch it, they pitch the store, and then they sit on it. And that's hurt Goodyear. We have a couple have done that. And these are well-known names. It leaves, of course, us as a city looking, you know, like egg on our face. So, but then they have constitutional legal rights. And so, you, you have to balance that out and figure out how we can stimulate them. And I think our team is looking at that. So, I don't know how, what your experience is on that.
Well, my only comment to you is, is once a developer has put hard dollars into owning land, put more hard, hard dollars into getting your approval on a site plan or zoning, those dollars are typically raised from investors. Those investors want a return on that money. And nothing kills a rate of return faster than time ticking by. I don't, I don't think that any property owner who showed up with an exciting story to tell and then sat and didn't do anything is doing it because he thinks that's what's best for him. Property owners get a little too excited about what their plans are. They drink their own Kool-Aid. Sometimes, they believe things they shouldn't and the market wasn't quite what they thought it was. Or their lead tenant declared bankruptcy. Or the lenders changed the game on them right before they were ready to sign a loan. I, as, being a developer, there is no reason why, I, I can't think of a single reason why, if I had everything ready to go, I wouldn't go. You just, you only don't go if you're prohibited, not by choice. It's just, there's too much eating away at return on investment.
I put the question to you in the way I put it because I want the public to hear that.
Yeah.
All right? Because the conversation out there is exactly what I said to you.
Yeah.
Okay? Carrie?
One of our other cities around here was looking for a Portelos. I'm not going to say who it was, but they apparently started a campaign, a citizens, a grassroots-based campaign. Is that something that we could work with our economic development to get our citizens to start contacting these realtors and say, this is our need, this is our want? Is that something they would listen to? Because you hear all the chatter, but it's not very focused to get to the retailers.
I think if you had citizen petitions or citizen tallies of, of favorite tenants, to put that in some kind of a documentable, you know, one or two pager, and again, get that to the developers, get that to the property owners. I, I wouldn't get it to brokers and I wouldn't send it to retailers. I'd say, you people that make your living on recruiting these retailers, go to these top 10, these top five that our community says they want. And let's find out, if they're not coming, why? And let's get the conversation so that good information's coming back to you. Nordstrom used to tell me all the time, we typically go to cities where we see our charge cards in other cities. The reason they're in Scottsdale is because they couldn't believe how many people from Scottsdale and in Phoenix generally pulled out a charge card in a San Diego Nordstrom all summer long. And, and that's why they decided to come to Arizona was for that very purpose. So, they're looking where demand is. And Nordstrom told stories of people that would put together petitions and bring signed petitions from an entire area saying, you're who we want. Trader Joe's gets a lot of people with that sort of thing.
The, the best thing is, we get our petitions from our neighborhoods for maybe an Apple Store, a Trader Joe's, and we get that to Michelle to make sure we put it together. We just don't want the things going wither, nither.
I, my guess is, Michelle knows how to create a one- or two-page white paper and say, here's what the latest desires are in our community, here's the number of people asking for them, and get that to the developers and the property owners. If nothing more, you're giving some existing shopping center owner or some guy with land an idea to say, I hadn't thought of that, I'm going to go talk to those guys. It can hurt.
That's kind of on a different scale of, you could say, look forward in the F-35. I resent the thousands of postcards and, everybody did. So, it kind of like that big campaign.
And what's funny is, that's exactly what I did when I was seeing one of these Facebook community groups that we have. They were saying, what is it that you want? And they started listing here in Goodyear all, and so I started cutting and pasting all of that. And I sent them to Michelle, I sent them to Maestris. And I said, this is what people are asking for out here, you know? And then that's where I got the confusion of what a Twin Peaks and Four Peaks restaurant was. And so, that was kind of funny. But, but that's exactly, you know, you, you have to go and, and, and find out what exactly, and of course, Trader Joe's was there. But, you know, I had probably a list of 25 different, you know, retailers and restaurants that people were truly wanting. And, and I agree with you, those, that's what's going to finally get people's attention sometimes.
Bill, do you have any comments?
No, I, I don't think I have anything to add. Everyone has expressed the, I think, the similar concern that, that I've expressed, that we all share the frustration and the passion for doing it, which is why this work session material is so important for us to, to talk about. And I realize there's a few more slides left, but we've talked about awakening developers. And I don't think there's any greater way for us to awaken a developer by making a huge splash with what we're about to talk about. So, I'm, I'm excited for that.
Thank you, Bill. Any other questions?
Great.
Well, I think we...
Great, well, we have a...
I'm going to turn it over. No, I know you do.
A little bit more, yeah, a little bit more, sorry. We'll try to accelerate. We thought it was great to have David here and be able to hear directly, no, no. Thank you very much, hear directly from a decision-maker. Okay. So, we hope in these next few slides, we can talk about maybe something we can do to accelerate as you were talking about, some of the developers and some of the retailers. So, we're going to look at a couple of cities in greater Phoenix that have been seen as successful in retail recruitment to determine what types of programs may have assisted them in their efforts. So...
The first one's Avondale. Everybody's most familiar with that, is, it's our neighboring city. They had created a incentive program based on development impact fees for both residential and commercial. What it did essentially is, is provide a 20% discount on the development fee due. Tried to include an example, since it was on residential as well, what that would look like. So, for a single-family residential, assuming a three-quarter inch water meter, it lowered it $3,000, a little, $3,500 roughly. However, in doing that, they also estimated a gain of $3,500 to $4,000 in revenue based on new building permits and actually new construction TPT or transaction privilege tax. They have a $2 million cap and they have it included in fiscal year budgets through 2718, or 1718.
I think the important point, just real quick to make there, is that when we talked to Avondale and, and I think David commented on the program, is that impact you can see really from lot to lot. So, if you look at it in terms of residential, that impact, you can see it looks pretty low, well, $17,000 to $14,000. But if that's on every single lot, that's going to equal quite a bit. So, I think what they've felt and what they've seen is that it's been very helpful on the residential side. And as David said, that's important for retail because they wanted that growth. So, I just wanted to make that point there. And we'll get into kind of comparing that in a bit.
Was that one community?
That was Avondale, yes.
But, no, no, I Avondale, but one, one...
Oh, one housing community?
Development community.
That's a good question. I don't know about that.
I'm sorry, could you, what was the question? Was that for...
Was that like a Sadea? Or was that like a...
Because that's who spoke, spoke at the state of the city. So, that's the reason I'm asking that. So, they didn't go across the board. They took a development of an area that they wanted to get developed faster. No?
No, I'm sorry. That's, I'm sorry. No, it was across the board, 20% reduction. I'm sorry, I, I misunderstood what you're saying. So, it's a 20% reduction on development impact fees for commercial and residential. But what they found successful is the, because it really started to add up on the residential side.
Yeah, so was it citywide?
Thank you.
Next is Peoria. They have a half-cent, a half-cent sales tax fund that they use as a mechanism for incentives. They have targeted investment zones. One investment zone that we wanted to point out is P-83 due to the concentration of retail restaurants, et cetera. What this program allows them, the city to do, is assist with interior tenant improvements. There is no program cap. And what they're essentially doing is determining who they would like to incentivize. They do it in the form of an annual reimbursable grant to the retailer or business based on jobs created, capital investment and sales tax revenue generated. Interestingly, they are trying to attract businesses and entertainment and not necessarily restaurants. And stated from them because of some having a historical failure rate in that area. So, they're trying to diversify and not just attract restaurants with this.
And then we talked a little bit about the Gilbert example. That was one that we wanted to look into because so many folks were interested in that example. And it, Gilbert created the Heritage Downtown Development District, which they called their 30-year overnight success. It's a great area of restaurants in their downtown district, including Lolo's Chicken and Waffles, Snooze and others. There was an interesting article in the Arizona Republic a few weeks ago on the area. And staff related to the city tells us, no real incentive program there in terms of reductions in costs. They, the, the city didn't pay for tenant improvements or subsidizing buildings less than market rate or anything like that. They did do expedited permitting, but not at a reduced cost. And, you know, the, the key factors here, it's very different. It's a downtown area, the buildings were there. The town is the majority landowner, so they have site control for the area. They do allow shared parking and that's an issue there for sure with all the restaurants. So, the city has a shared parking. The city also is, shares in the marketing of the area. So, they do a lot of marketing for the Heritage Downtown District, which is something interesting. And we've been told that really, the, once Postinos came to the area, that kind of exploded the whole thing. So, as David was saying before, once, you know, one thing comes, others will, will And then considering these other city programs and consulting with our city attorney's office, staff has performed an analysis on possible ways in which the city of Goodyear could provide incentives to encourage retail development. So, conducting this analysis, again, in conjunction with the city attorney's office, there are two types of ways in which the city could impact what we earlier described as the ROI for the retailer or slash developer, and specifically that reduce that occupancy cost without triggering potential legal issues. We came up with two potential ways. One is the development impact fee reduction program. And that is the sample of Avondale example, but where we would directly target retail. Also, plan review and permit fees, waiving those up to a certain amount, which would be lost revenue to the city, not an expense, as opposed to the development impact fees where we would have to make those whole for what we reduced. So, there's a difference there. And Robert is going to describe each for you really quickly.
So, just to touch really quickly on what is a development impact fee? One-time charge instituted by cities for public facilities based on their proportionate share of costs incurred for infrastructure, facilities and services needed to accommodate the project or the new development. In Goodyear, just want to make clear that we have three zones, the north, central and south. Boundaries for those, for the north zone is north, anything north of the I-10. Central zone is I-10 to the Gila River. South zone is Gila River to Pecos Road. That would include all of Estrella Mountain Ranch. Each zone is assessed with both utility and non-utility development fees. For utility, that's going to include meter fee, water, wastewater. Non-utility, that's where you'll be assessed for parks and recs, streets, police and fire. For the non-utility development fees under non-residential, and that could be for industrial, commercial, institutional, office or other, they're calculated off per thousand square feet of floor area. So, what makes the difference, what makes the north zone a little bit different than central and south is that the city's not the main utility provider for the north portion. So, trying to come up with an incentive based on development impact fees but treating all areas of the city equally, therefore, you, we cannot include the utility portion of the development fee, leaving only the non-utility development fees. And just one other quick note I wanted to, to point out is that, once a development fee, impact fee is charged for a new structure, and let's say it's in a power center and it, space is vacated, that project is, is not assessed for new fees once a tenant moves in. Then they would just incur tenant improvements. So, only, not development impact fees again. And I mention that because I know we have some vacant boxes here within the city, so I just wanted to make that clear. Next slide, plan review and permit fees. Basically, they're charged to the developer for business or development services, calculated on project valuation. Valuation determined by the most recent International Code Council ICC data. If a hotel is built versus like 8,000 square foot restaurant, the total project costs or the project valuation in this case will be different. So, larger projects are typically going to have higher plan review fees and permit fees. One important thing to point out on this slide is that the, the reduction, reductions in plan review and permit fees are lost revenue, not necessarily a direct expense to the city. And that's very important as we move on.
So, let's get into the possible options for council. If you could advance this one. So, there's really two incentive, or two options for what we talked about tonight, either create a program or do not create a program. Now, within, if you decide to create a program, there's several different options that you can, pieces that you can kind of move around and, and decide what you want to do with. One of those in that first box there in that flow chart is establish the parameters of the program. And that's, do you want it specifically for retail? Do you want a square footage floor on it? How do you want to go ahead and, and make those parameters, if you do want to make those parameters? And then deciding if you do want to do the development impact fee reduction. If you do, then determining the cap and the reduction amount, so how much you want to spend each year, and then the reduction amount that you want to reduce each project. And then determine the length of the program. How many years do you want to do the program for? And I think, you know, we're going to get into some conversation about that and, and why that's important, because it might accelerate some things if you make it a limited timeframe. And then you could also, as we discussed, waive the plan review and permit fees that we do up to a certain amount when we do the economic analysis on the project that we do for a lot of commercial or industrial projects based on jobs and things like that that are coming in. So, making sure that the revenue that comes in with the development agreement, or I should say, economic development agreement, that revenue that's coming in exceeds what we're giving out.
So, now we come to the, the staff recommendation. And in order to be as aggressive as we can as a city, we would recommend to create an incentive program. Michelle mentioned establishing parameters of the program. We've determined that in order to truly incentivize what we are after, the desired retailer, retail, that we limit the program to just retail and entertainment that is 5,000 square feet or greater. This will allow for the more... This will allow for the more desired retail to be included that we are after. Also exclude some of the smaller projects, such as maybe smaller drive-throughs and other smaller retail-type projects or restaurants. Wanted to point out that while excluding some of the smaller projects, even if we did include, and we had no square footage parameter, the smaller the project is, the less significant it is. It's because it's based on per thousand square feet of floor area. So if I'm doing, if I'm a developer doing a two thousand square foot building, the, it's a very insignificant impact to the overall project. We also are recommending both a development impact fee reduction at 100% and a plan review and permit fee waiver program only with an economic development agreement. For the development impact fee reduction, just as a reminder, this will only be for the non-utility development fees, not utility, because of what we have with the north zone not being the main utility provider. Total program cap amount recommended, three million with a three-year duration for the program. And we're also recommending plan review and permit fee waiver program. Not only can this provide an additional incentive, but would also apply to some of the empty boxes that we have, these spaces, projects for the tenant improvements. Because we don't just want to, we want to keep that in mind as well to try to provide some type of incentive for the empty boxes. For the plan review and permit fee waivers, it would require an economic development agreement, as we do with major employers or projects. And we included this chart here so that council could get an idea of what these dollars equate to on different types of projects. So we have the first one, first row or table with restaurant convenience stores. Let's assume that it's a five thousand square foot project. When we take out the utility portion of that, based on five thousand square feet, it's thirteen thousand dollars plus on development impact fees. This would be the expense to the city. The estimated plan review fee, just, it's a revenue loss to the city, but not a direct expense, is ten thousand. And total impact to the project, twenty-four thousand, if you were to do both incentives for that type of project. And then as you see, you go down the list, the larger restaurant, retailer, grocery store, hotel, as you go up in square footage, the impact becomes greater and greater. The table basically shows that with the dollar amounts, that a hundred thousand square foot hotel is going to receive a much greater benefit than something at five thousand square feet. So it brings us to our next slide, pros and cons. And so I'm just going to touch on the pros, and Michelle will cover the cons. Aside from what's listed on this slide, it certainly gives us a great marketing tool, a marketing punch when we're interacting with developers and retailers. One of the things that it can do, if idle projects are accelerated, it could have a domino effect, providing further benefit to the city. If we have an idle project and they decide to move forward, let's assume it's a commercial center that's vacant, maybe that spurs more and more right after each other. And ultimately, we're collecting sales tax revenue on all those projects. So again, definitely a pro. And as it relates to the development impact fees, these are only one time where these businesses are paying sales tax annually. So definitely something to keep in mind, because they'll be, continue to be collected year after year.
Okay, so the cons that we came up with, that we thought you should think about in your determining your recommendation or your consideration is impact to the general fund for the development impact fee reduction. Those would have to be made whole, so that would be, need to be replaced. Now, as I said earlier, you can kind of slide those things. If you don't want to do the three million dollar cap, maybe you want to do a different cap. Whatever that amount would be, would be the one that you would have to replace in the fund. So whatever was taken up by that, by that reduction. The lost revenue of plan review and permit fee waivers, that's lost revenue. So not the same as a direct expense to the general fund, but it's lost revenue. So want you to consider that. It could incentivize, this is really a pro and a con. It could incentivize activity already in the pipeline. So if you already know something's coming and they apply for it, they could get the reduction as well. Now, on the pro side, that might accelerate some projects that are idle. So that, just consider both of those things. You know, and a couple of things, and I'm sure that David can help us kind of emphasize these two, is this cannot guarantee those top ten most desirable retailers. Because the thing that's, the underlying importance is your, their ability to continue to make money. So we're going to, you know, reduce their costs to be there and the developer to come in and create the facility, but they have to sustain it. So the housing, the major employment, the daytime traffic, that's all still important. We don't want to get that, that to get lost in here. And it also, the final thing is it cannot, we cannot discriminate based on the type of retailer. So the way we kind of tried to do that was to save five thousand square feet and above, because then you can, you can kind of create parameters, but you can't say, oh, I don't like that one, I do like that one, I want to give them the benefit, not that one. If it's within retail, you have to do that within those parameters. So just wanted to make sure you were kind of let known about the pros and the cons on those things, so.
With that, we'll go with questions and discussion.
Thank you. Bill, are you still there?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a question on this one?
So I do, what, just out of curiosity, what is the typical size of, and I'm going to say, a chain restaurant? What we typically get? I realize that there's different sizes, you know, our, our Applebee's, for example, is smaller than the typical size. But kind of in general, or if we know what, what the size of the Oregano's was, or is?
So to answer that question, Councilmember Stip, the size of the Oregano's at starting point, because they've already expanded and added an additional six hundred square feet, they were about fifty-three hundred square feet to begin with.
Okay. Okay. That's very helpful. Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to add to that, that we have some major chain restaurants along McDowell Road that have a larger footprint than that. I know Texas Roadhouse does, and some others in that area. But five, six, something to note on the top ten most desired retailers, Portillo's is almost at ten thousand square feet. So for their prototype that they would build, it's quite a bit larger. So it really ranges, but that's why we tried to establish a parameter of four thousand, or five thousand square feet.
I appreciate that. Is there anything in this, from a legal perspective, that allows us to deviate between our numbers? So if we were to choose a number between five thousand and ten thousand, is there anything that prohibits that from happening?
Roy's going to answer.
Councilmember Stip, that, that's up to the council's discretion. I mean, the program was designed to target certain retailers, and five thousand square feet seemed to be the sweet spot on what the target was. And we will tailor the program design on the, on the front end to address those issues. So no, I guess is the answer. You can pick whatever square footage you want, or eliminate that square footage requirement entirely. But the program design, legally, we're going to take that into account in making your findings as far as the benefits to the city, based upon the square footage or absence thereof.
All right, thank you. Did that answer your question, Bill?
It did. So I have one final question, and that is, what do, how is a service station and retail store, convenience store, you know, the common combination of those two things? How, how is that classified from this perspective? Is that considered commercial, I mean, retail?
Yes, it would be, Councilmember Stip.
Okay. That's all the questions that I have. I'm going to listen to, listen to everybody else from this point. I appreciate, Mayor, that you allow us to go first. It makes listening a lot easier.
We know the difficulty when you're calling in, so, all right, who would like to start this one? Questions, council? Cheryl Lynn?
Would you mind if I directed a question to David?
Can you bring your microphone up to you, please?
My question is always, in your experience, is this kind of incentive tip over someone who is holding back? I mean, obviously, if they're already looking at it, it might, perhaps. But does it kind of tip the scales in the favor of the cities that do offer this kind of thing?
This, can you hear me okay? It would for me. I do not think an incentive like this would cause somebody to say, gee, I just read this in the paper, let's go look for some land in Goodyear and do something out there. But I think existing property owners and existing developers who maybe are starting to see several things line up, this could be a tipping point where they say, hey, we just found a way to lower, you know, our total project cost by four or five bucks a foot. That might be what gets lender approval, because they were just able to show some cost reductions of the total project. So I think this ends up being much more of a tipping point for existing stakeholders in your city than causing somebody to come to your city and set up business. Probably not going to do that for just saving four or five dollars a foot in building costs.
Thank you. Wally?
May I, David, I have another question. Do you think five thousand feet is reasonable?
I do. I was, I had my face wrinkled up a minute ago, because I hear the discussion amongst you talking about retailers of that size. I view it as buildings that size. Because what we're talking about is trying to incentivize a developer to build a building of five thousand feet or greater. So that means he might build fifty thousand feet. It doesn't necessarily mean that it'll be incentivizing only five thousand foot tenants. That building might be fifty thousand feet with several two thousand foot tenants. They would all benefit because that building got built for cheaper. So I think this is more of a discussion about incentivizing the construction of buildings and less about who we want to put into business.
Thank you for that clarification.
Joe?
Unless I'm wrong, but that's the way I interpreted it.
Question on the timing. If I understand your recommendations correctly, the one dealing with the permit fees, because I tend to disagree, it might cost us some money other than revenue if we get enough of them, and you got to bring on staff to meet the demand. That's a possibility, okay? So besides lack of revenue, it still might be a true cost if you got to, if you got to hire some people to do it as a result of this thing takes off. I guess the question I have is to reduce that fee or to waive it, will it require an economic impact analysis on that side of the equation? Yes or no?
Yes. Yes, it would. Some way to show the estimate, and that, we're talking about whether we could do that maybe with a model in-house, if we purchase, I'm talking to the finance department, if we purchase a model. But we've generally done it in terms of a third-party economic analysis. And that's what we'd want to make sure that that sales tax revenue that's generated, as well as the jobs, and that, that would equal, you know, that would show for, to protect us, that would show that that revenue would be greater.
That's great, because I would rather, on that side of the equation, make sure that you feel very comfortable, because I know there's other things we use that for. My only concern, though, is you got to double whammy on the billing permit fee. So I would feel more comfortable if you did the analysis before we did anything on the billing permit fees. Second question I have is the three-year program. Did you ever think of, since the whole idea is incentivizing and moving forward, first year, one hundred, second year, eighty-five, third year, seventy percent of the fees? Do you ever think about tiering it so that there's a greater percentage in the first year, a little less the second year, a little less the third year? Just a thought.
That's a great thought, and I think that's what the discussion is for. That's a great thought. And I think that is, you know, to where you can play with the years, too. If you don't want to do it for three years, want to do it for two, or whatever. But I think that's, that's a great thought.
And can I, one more?
Yes, no, go ahead.
On, on the actual program itself, when it goes through, I, you know, I like the fact to try to figure out, but what, what point would this start? The issuing of building permits? What's the mechanics? I mean, is it, do they come in and say, we're going to do it, and that starts it? Or they actually have to submit plans to start the ticker within the three years? Or is it a billing permit physically has to be pulled? I mean, what's going to determine the criteria to give it? And again, probably the attorney more than anything else, I want to make sure that whatever we do, and you've given those incentives as they come in and pull, that they follow through. And if they don't, in other words, do the permit to start going up, that we have, we get the money back, or so to speak.
All right.
Mayor, Mr. Council, excuse me. We've discussed building permit, because that's when you legally have to pay the impact fees. So that's when you would set that impact fee amount. So the program we discussed has been at permit.
Yes, for the development impact fees. And then for the plan review and the permit fee waivers, it'd be how we generally do it. Council would have to approve that, and that, you know, we'd do the third-party analysis, and then they'd have to approve it. So it'd either be, you know, something that if council had not approved it yet, they would pay and then get reimbursed, or if they had approved it before, they would waive.
Okay, thank you.
It's over here first. Okay, all right, sorry.
Joanne?
Thank you. Well, I have to tell you, this, this is a difficult discussion for me, and I won't lie about that. But I have to say, you know, it was, it's unfortunate that, I was hoping that this type of incentive program would help us kind of laser beam on certain things that we were, you know, looking for. Uniqueness, certain, you know, restaurants or things like that, I was hoping. Because I sit there envisioning, well, now we're going to have all the convenience stores and fast food restaurants, all of those wanting to, you know, use this incentive. Where I was hoping it was going to be a little more, you know, in things that we've really been wanting for the last few years. But I understand, fair is fair. The other thing, I guess, is that I was thinking about how do auto malls come into this? Is there, you know, because they can say, well, we have our, our parts department, we have, you know, how do you, how do you define some things, I guess is, I guess my question? The other would be, David made a comment that, you know, as I'm looking at this, I'm thinking pads, you know, we're standalone restaurants, standalone retailer is going to be building on, grocery store is going to be building on. He just said, a building, were you broken into two thousand, you know, square foot other things, but would this still work for them? And so then that takes me back to the mall. So some of the defining parts of this is where I'm, I'm, guess I'm a little cloudy on when he made that comment, because he was, you know, he was hearing that, oh, wow, well, how does that look for these other things? Where I'm in my mind thinking standalone entities, you know? And so, so I think that definition would be helpful a little more. But I mean, in my, you know, I was thinking, you know, I don't want to incentivize fast food, I don't want to incentivize liquor stores, I don't want to incentivize tobacco stores, I don't want, I mean, there's a lot of things that you could say, what are you incentivizing? My store is five thousand square feet. So if that, you know, that can tell you where you go and up. And so even back to Bill's statement is, kind of what is that sweet number? You know, if, if fast food restaurants are more in the four thousand range, well, we certainly want to stay five thousand. If it's some of these other Texas Roadhouse-style restaurants, we say, oh, well, you know what? Maybe it's not five thousand, maybe it's seventy-five hundred. So, you know, I am looking for that. You know, what is kind of the strategy that helps us laser in a little more on certain things and not just on whatever is out there? So sorry to be a little snobby about that, but I think that this is, you know, a good tool, and that's what we're looking for. And we know in the long run, that's what's going to help us all. But I, but, you know, I would like it to be used for something that was worthwhile.
Sherri?
I think I'm a little bit, Joanne, on some of those issues. That was one of my concerns.
That was one of my concerns, also when I saw grocery stores pop up there. That was, I was a little, I know the fries over on Litchfield is just absolutely like a staycation waiting to happen over there with the wine bar and all of that, but I was a little concerned that it was going to go to maybe, you know, the Circle K mini mart type thing.
Convenience name, the convenience name.
Convenience names that we need, of course, but that's not really what we're trying to target. My question also was, is this going to be anywhere in the city? I mean, are we going to have, like, designated zones in the city that we really want to encourage this? You know, maybe a zone south, maybe a zone in the central area, maybe a zone north, or just kind of shot everywhere? I'm not sure how that works.
We were thinking of doing it across the board so that it was even across the board. So, that's what our recommendation was, but certainly up for your discussion if you, if the majority of council wants to do it differently, and I think that would be, we could talk about that.
Would that be allowed to say we want, like, we talked about before, the mall zone, the stadium zones, a zone south to encourage in pockets so we don't have things just kind of going everywhere? Because I think we want that density. Is that allowed or does that be a violation?
I think when we're looking at the, at the impact fees, we have three zones, so I think if you were going to go by zones, you're probably going to limit it to your impact B zones. I think it starts getting real convoluted if we start carving those zones up. I would probably advise you keep it citywide, but I think, I think if you were to limit it, you might want to look at our adopted impact B zones.
Joe?
That's where I was kind of going from a legal standpoint. What if we just picked one of the zones? Would we have an issue? Or if we picked two of the zones and left one of the zones out? I'm just wondering from a legal issue, and I think that's where I was kind of coming from what Sherry's bringing up. Do we have a problem? You know, I'm kind of with Joanne. I can see me maybe boosting the square footage up a little bit to maybe, I wouldn't say minimize some, but to make sure we get what we want, you know? I don't know if six is it or 6,500, but I'm more concerned legally is if we pick and choose certain areas, is that going to create a problem for us from an incentive standpoint, constitutionally, I'll put it that way?
I think my response is, one, you're asking for legal advice. I'd prefer to give you an executive session. But again, our program we presented tonight is more of a program of general applicability across the city. But if he wants to examine the other, we can get back to you on that.
Wally?
I have two questions. Number one, I personally would like to see it across the board, because I don't want everything developed around the ballpark and then everything else out. And I just feel if we had a level playing field, it would be more accepted by the development of community, because they may not own land over there, or they may not, I mean, what are we going to do in West Goodyear? And so, and I'm always the one that I want everything fair with everyone. I don't want anyone to have an edge, but I don't mind this edge if they'll build. My next question, did you decide not to have a conversation on the development fees to spur more housing?
We could certainly have that discussion. I think the discussion, what prompted this work session was doing something specifically for retail, so that's what we stuck to, but.
Well, and that, it goes hand in hand with what David was saying, because David said you need density and you need more housing, and for what Avondale is doing, I see that they did lower the cost to building each house level across the board in the city, but they more than made up for the fees that they lost by having all of the developments spring up. And while this may not be a great time right now to be building, because the construction industry itself, I don't think, has bounced back as well as we would like to have it, and a lot of our skilled workers left and went elsewhere, and some of our, some of the friends that I have that are building houses now can't even find the tradesmen they need to finish the projects they have, because the people they're using are off doing something else. But if we did do that, we need to do either or. We either need to talk about the development fees, right, Michelle, or this program.
We could do, you mean, in terms of either, we could do either one, and the kind of, what we, we're suggesting is you do both.
Oh.
Yeah, we're suggesting you do both. So, that's where that and is in the middle there, the development impact fee reduction and, you know, consider plan review and permit fee waivers. That way, if you have a large one, that, let's say you have something you really want to incentivize, and the development impact fee reduction doesn't really make that much of a difference to them, then you can put that in there, too, plan review and permit fee waivers, which will be significant. Because if you look at the chart here, you can kind of see that it's, it is, the bigger you go, the more significant it is.
Of course. All right, thank you.
So, that's the only reason for that.
All right, well, thank you. I like that you're putting all of it together that way, and it's either or.
Mayor, if I may, just to add to that, Avondale, a lot of their focus was, and it was across the board for all development, and they were at a competitive disadvantage at the time they did their program with the cost of their impact fees on residential. So, instead of going through the whole process, which can take a year and a half or so to redo your development impact fees for residential, they decided to go this route, to actually subsidize that, which brought the cost of the development for a house down. The other thing is the $3 million, and the reason we're focusing on retail is, we still have to fund the $3 million to replace the development impact fees. And the one, and not looking at our finance director right now, but one of the options, and we'd have to bring it forward as we go through the budget, is we had talked about the contingency that council sets by policy, what we set up, and right now, it's at three months. There's been conversations to reduce that to two months or 15% of revenues. So, but we'd have to have a funding source to replace that development impact fee so we can make it whole. And right now, those are some of the thoughts we have. But if you go over $3 million, that starts to push the thresholds for our ability to do something.
Can we stop at $3 million? Now that you said what you said, can we cut it off at $3 million?
Yes, we can cap it at any amount, whether it's $1 million to try it out, or $2 million, or $3 million. If you want to go to a two-year program instead of three-year, I mean, there, council has all those options available.
Cheryl Lynn?
I just had a comment, and maybe we need to, perhaps, in our discussions, I'd like to see a little more care taken, because I don't think any business, whether it's 1,000, 1,500, or 2,000 square feet, is insignificant. It may not be as significant as a 5,000 or 10,000, but it still has significance to the growth of our city.
Yeah. I don't doubt that, is, you know, when you were in conversation, I don't doubt that, but I think we, we have to set a parameter here of what we're trying to do.
Mayor, if I could just clarify why we did that. We did, it wasn't, and we weren't saying it was insignificant, it was an insignificant amount to, any business would be glad to save money. So, but we were saying that for two reasons, 5,000, that if it were smaller, it would be less impactful than to get someone here and less of a tiebreaker, as you said. But secondly, to try to do those parameters, like the drive-throughs and the convenience stores and things like that, to try to not incentivize some of that activity.
You may go ahead and respond.
Thank you. And I absolutely agree. You know, I've been in the business for a very long time, but when we start to include a business and insignificant in the same sentence, I think it is probably better said, not as significant, or maybe separated into two separate sentences.
Understood, thank you.
Just, just, I, because I obviously have been a small business advocate for a very, very long time, and I just think that, that's all I'm saying. Just watch how you're phrasing it.
I appreciate your sensitivity, and we all need to have that within our dialogue here, so. I think we're pretty much finished by the question. Dave, I want to thank you so much. Do you have any last words that you could say to us in the conversation, or the questions that you've heard around the table?
Yeah, one, one real quick thing. Something that Councilmember Stipp said resonated with me, and that is, I think, any decision you make on this, the packaging and the messaging may be more powerful than the actual dollars. And there's almost a part of me that says, go ahead and pass this tool, set it on the shelf, but then I'd give some great thought to how you want to use the PR and marketing machine, and how many other things can you put together and launch a campaign that's, you know, that says, "Goodyear now," and have, you know, every month for four months, release something else you're doing, and turn this into a momentum generating machine rather than just slipping in a new fee structure. And I think, I think that probably is the beginning of a more powerful movement than just the dollars alone.
I was personally leaning towards 10,000 as we were speaking instead of 5,000, just because of the desire, wants, the phone calls, the, you know, the emails, you name it. It is somewhere beyond 5,000 to, so that would cover. So, did you have one last number?
No, I was just going to say, I'd like to see it probably a little higher. I'm with you and Joanne, I'd see a little higher than five. I don't know if seven's the number. I don't know if 10 might be too high, but maybe seven, seven and a half, I don't know. Maybe we can have further discussion on that, but I, I think five might be a little low.
Sherry?
It might be low, but I am not really good at visualizing. I think Joanne's saying her store is, it seems bigger than 5,000, but I'm not very good at visualizing, so maybe if we could get some data on what current restaurants or stores, their square footage, that would help me a lot.
And that would, and 5,000 is pretty, for lack of a better word, significant in terms of how large it is. That's pretty large in terms of a restaurant or something like that. Is that, if you start getting higher than that, you might kind of box out some of your, what you're really looking to do, like a trendy, fast casual type of thing. Agreed?
Mayor?
I want to thank you for the presentation.
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Somebody heard from above, I hadn't, I didn't hear this. Bill, go ahead.
And I choked on half the word as I was speaking. But in regard to the size, I think that, for me, that was the question about how big was the Oregano's, and it was just a little bit over. And Oregano's took a chance with their, with their store, and then they decided to expand. And I think that, if we're going to, if we're going to truly incentivize them, we're going to tell people, hey, it's okay to take a risk, but we're not expecting you to build something huge, then I think we should be careful when we start talking about higher numbers, 7,500 or 10,000. Those are pretty large, you know, businesses. And if we're trying to bring that one, and I'm going to say the one-off, the, the single proprietor in a single shop, that is, that unusual restaurant, or that one standalone, we may have cut off our nose despite our face. So, I guess I just would be very cautious on that. And then the other comment in listening to the discussions about how much and timing, I guess I, the question that I have from that is, we're being asked for a hard 3 million, 1 million, whatever that number is, and how long do you want it to last? I guess my question to staff ultimately when this comes back, because it sounds like there's consensus, is can we do it for a year with a one-year extension and do that every single year? Can we, you know, we may want to, if this is very popular and it has come to be very successful, we might want it to go for five years, and we may not want to sunset it early. So, what are our options in extending and the option for cutting it off early if we find that it, we don't, we don't want to tie up the money because it just isn't working? I mean, can we have that as part of the discussion when it comes back?
The answer is yes. We can certainly do that. We can, we can add expenditures to this if you want to do a one-year pilot, for example. We can come back with different cap numbers, and then certainly, the council has every opportunity each year to go ahead and do extensions to this. You know, you can sunset them with a provision to certainly add additional time to the, to this program.
And I'd like to substantiate, I agree with you. I'd like, I'd like to see the square footage and the designs in the same way, so I can kind of close myself in here from 10 to 5, or whatever it is. Prefer that. Yes, Joe?
My takeaway is, the plan, to me, I like. I guess the question is the details. Do we go with 3 million? Do we go with 2 million? Do we go one year? Do we go two years? Do we sunset it? Do we do, you know, whatever? Do we look at the square footage? I think that's something, all that we can, when it comes back, we can figure out that. And, you know, Bill, you might be right about the five, and again, I'm more visual when it comes to that. You know, I was thinking what the square footage of like Cheesecake Factory or, you know, some of the barbecue places are, some of those unique, Dave and Buster's, what are those sizes, you know, as opposed to a Circle K or a Quick Lube, you know, things along those lines? That's what I was thinking, whether five's the right number, but I can be persuaded if we're going to possibly lose some type of specialty restaurants that we would like to gather here. But, but I, it sounds almost like everybody kind of likes the program, it's just a matter of where you, where you anchor it at.
Dave, you had a comment.
Yeah, again, I just, for the sake of making sure nobody's, or we're all on the same page, I think what you've proposed is, let's just use an example, if somebody had a 10-acre corner and they proposed 100,000-square-foot shopping center, that shopping center might have lots of opportunities in it for 2,000 and 3,000-foot great little restaurant. And yet, I assume the staff would process that as being greater than 5,000. It's not, it's not each building, it's the total project that came in for the permit. And so, even if you set a higher, a higher starting point, like 5,000 or 10,000 feet to get the city's attention, it does not rule out the ability to accommodate lots of great little 2,000-foot destination restaurants or small shops, because they can occupy those buildings. So, again, try and keep in your mind that this is tied to project totals, not individual tenants, just.
I think that gave a lot of food for thought, okay? So, as you can hear from the conversation tonight, I think that the council certainly wants to move forward. So, you have your answer there. They have some questions they want answered and presented, but good job. I think we're all excited, we're ready to get it formed and move it on. So, thank you so much. And Dave, thank you very much, Mr. Scholl, for being here tonight and spending your time with us. So, can we give him a round of applause? Not often we get it. So, thank you so much, so much, yes.
So. Mayor, we're about to end. End of six. We would, regarding the work session on signs, we do not have time to do that. What I may suggest is, we can bring that another night or do it after the end of the council meeting tonight at council's prerogative.
I'm going to look at council.
It's about an hour in length.
Because they're the ones that have to stay, it's about an hour presentation?
An hour presentation.
I can't hear you, you have to talk about how long the meeting goes.
How long the meeting goes, you know? I mean, if we've got it, it's an hour.
Can we float a little bit and look at, it means they have to stay around.
We have an attorney here that is here to work with us on the work session, so.
I know we have to start.
And she is, she is on the clock.
She's on the clock.
She's on the clock. Oh, my gosh.
Okay, so we have to, 6 o'clock, start the, I know, our meeting. I'm fully aware of that.
Does it matter, do we release her, let her go, or do you want her to wait and see?
I'm asking the council, do you want it?
Just do it another night.
All right, we're going to do it a different night.
She's on the clock.
She's on the clock.
That works.
Okay, all right. That may be, you'll have to stay a little later, a little earlier, just so I substantiate that before you go. Okay, thank you so much. And so, what I'm going to do is give you a break, because we start, remember, we have to start this at 6 o'clock, okay? So, this meeting is adjourned.